Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, September 27th, 2018. If you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming out this evening. Before we get on to our business of the evening, I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes from September 13th, 2018, and acceptance of warrants 14 P-19 and 13 V-19.
So moves.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Our student rep is in here yet?
Chloe's not coming.
She's not coming, okay.
She just said there was just too much stuff, she just couldn't do it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And she tried to get her rep, but with sports and all the activities, she said she just couldn't do it.
Okay.
She felt bad, but...
Yeah, I'm sure, I know it's busy for them, that's fine. Does anybody have anything that has been going on in the school that they want to contribute to? I know soccer, girl soccer lost today, boy soccer, I think, lost today, but they played really well, both of them. I saw both games for a little bit, they played, girls played inland field, boys played here.
The varsity football is in Taunton, but on Saturday at 1:00.
Saturday at 1:00, and tomorrow night is the Oktoberfest, the fundraiser.
Oktoberfest, Camp Denison.
Yes, Camp Denison for the football team, so, and I know their tickets are available at the door, so people could still go if they didn't grab their tickets beforehand. I don't think the weather's gonna be all that great, but it still should be fun. It's a, it's a fundraiser.
Can be inside.
It's inside, that's right.
Yeah, so it'll be a good fundraiser for them. And I think field hockey's been pushed out a couple of times because of field, field issues, so. So that's it.
Did I mention the Kiev meeting?
Sure, yeah, that's great, yeah.
So, the sixth grade had a meeting with the parents for Kiev Leadership School, and say there were about forty parents there. And...
Yeah, the library was full.
Yeah, Mr. Patella did his presentation, and that was great, and very few questions from the parents, so.
I wonder if that's because it's not their first child going, what do you think?
Right.
I don't know. Maybe they've had pre, I don't know. Well, that's good.
There were, there were a number, there are a number, aren't there, Margaret, that are first time?
Yeah.
There were a lot of them? I was looking around the room, I was thinking, oh.
Well, I think...
Well, I think that we had the presentation in the spring, and that was actually very well attended. So I think some of the, and so since then and now, they've probably either talked to people and then come, you know, come again and... I think Mr. Patella, there's an element of people know him even if they, kids haven't gone, so maybe him presenting the information, parents feel at comfort level with knowing that he's there.
And what's the date, again?
They're, they're leaving on the Veterans Day.
The same thing happened last year. The same thing that did last year, yeah.
But I, I just...
November 5th, I believe.
They go on the Monday, Monday the 5th.
Wow. Yeah, I think the sense that I felt from the parents was they were really excited to have their kids go.
Good.
Like they wished they could go themselves. Sort of a feel I got.
Yeah, well, that's good.
Yeah, I think Joe did a really good job of going through, like giving them a sense of what the day really looks like, and even went through some of the activities and what the purpose of the activities were, so. You know, he just did a really, he did a really good job, and he's been there, it's authentic for him, he knows the stuff, as opposed to the director of the camp, kind of selling it a little bit, it's, yeah, this is more, I think Joe did a better job of just... This is really what your kids can expect, oh yeah, he does, yeah.
And his son will be going with it.
Yes, Christian's a sixth grader, Christian's a sixth grader.
So good, I'm sure he's looking...
Yeah, he was mentioning that.
He made a joke that that was his wife's birthday present, but he...
He was giving his wife that for her birthday present, that's right, that was pretty funny.
I bet Shari's very happy about that. That's good.
And the BTA, you know, had a very successful movie night.
Movie night.
Gosh, there had to be three hundred people there, I mean, it was very, very well attended, and it was nice, because there were a lot of organizations, Kiwanis came and gave, kind of gave free popcorn and hot dogs, and GF was there with some things, that there was pizza, free pizza for people. High school kids came and face painted, so the kids, you know, enjoyed that. It was just, oh, and Mike Clancy, who is one of our maintenance guys, he has a food truck that he just, he and his wife just started, so they were giving out free french fries that were hand-cut, like if you went to a fair, so that was really nice, and just, I mean, the kids enjoyed the movie. Yeah, and the weather was a little, got a little chilly, but once the sun went down, but it was really, I think that'll be something they'll want to do again. But it was a give back, they didn't charge any money for it, so.
That is a nice give back.
That is a nice give back.
And, and I liked the fact, too, that it didn't really draw from the football game, that was the same night, because that was, was very crowded, so that's good.
And the police and fire, they had a fire truck there, and they had a police truck, and Officer Henry was there, and, you know, kids could get in and out of the truck, and, and in and out of the police car, so that was, that was neat. There were a lot of kids who took advantage of that, so it was very nice, a lot of, a lot of really nice community spirit.
Yeah, it's like, it's, a lot of other districts, surrounding districts do like a back-to-school picnic or something, you know, which I feel like this fit in very nicely.
For us, yeah.
It was very nice.
Good, that's great.
Dan came for a while, and got some folks, and, yeah, it was just, I thought it was very well attended. I left about eight to go to the football game, which was at halftime, and we were tied, so it was...
That was an exciting game, a very exciting game.
I did miss the cheerleaders, which I was sorry to see, who did their routine, but, and the band, but it was, it was a good game, and a perfect night for football, don't you agree? It was like perfect.
It was, it was.
It was very nice.
And then Tuesday night, we had Diane Knight come in to speak about vaping and tobacco, which was, you know, very, very interesting, I thought.
It was very good.
You know, there were, there's some talk on Facebook about, well, why don't we, you know, talk about other issues, why, why this issue right now, and I think...
Because it's an issue right now.
Right, because it's somewhat new, and, you know, the use among young people is growing, I mean, still by far, it's, you know, the majority do not, but, but some kids do, and mainly, I think, you know, the young people, they don't, with all the flavors, it looks really cool and, and like something they might enjoy, but they don't understand how dangerous the concentrated nicotine and the other chemicals and everything in it is for them, and they, especially for developing brains. And it's just, you know, I think if they really got how dangerous it was, they would, you know, tend to stay away, but a lot of them don't understand that, and so...
What was the attendance?
About fifteen people, you know, including, including us.
It was an awful rainy night.
Awful rainy night, if I, you know, weren't involved in it with Georgetown Cares, I could see just wanting to stay home and watch TV and put a blanket over me, and...
But you know what, Pam, I thought was really interesting about it was the fact that we don't know what this could, this, what this will cause in years to come, you know, we don't, it's...
Right.
So that's what was so concerning to me, is that, you know, the kids, you know, they do feel that they're invincible in, in a lot of ways, but it's just concerning because it is so new, that you really don't know. You know, with cigarette smoking, two years and years and years ago, it was the same thing, but now we know how truly bad they are.
And years ago, too, with drinking, with underage drinking, I mean, our parents' generation didn't know how dangerous that was for us. But we, she had all the flavors, so we got to smell the popcorn and the blueberry lemonade and all that, and they were, you know, they smelled pretty real.
It was, yeah, yeah.
It was a very good, she did a great job, it was very nice, so glad, I'm glad that you were able to bring her in. It sounds like she's very busy with a lot of the local districts.
She is, yeah, yeah, and she was down in Boston on Wednesday, talking to the tobacco industry people and trying to share with, advocate.
I would also just quickly mention and advocate a little bit of press for Sandra Swartz-Coffin, Ryan Corbett, who are doing a, they want to, they're doing a voter registration.
Voter registration drive.
Drive, and they're, it's part of their classes, they've had a couple of guest speakers, Pam was one, and the interim, the interim town clerk came and spoke to the kids, but, you know, they all have a variety of different projects that they can work on, and it was so competitive that she was gonna put things up on the, go, no, not GoFundMe, what's the other one? Sign Up Genius, and at 2:15, and they were, like, everything was gone by...
In fifteen minutes.
Less than that.
Almost everything was gone.
Yeah, so the kids were like really nervous, like, you know, so they logged right on, and they, they got their thing, and she said, if we don't get what you want, work with me, you know, but the kids are, are very actively engaged in that, and it's just a nice civic, and they were very excited.
Yeah.
They had plans of who they had to talk to, they're just, it was very, it was very authentic learning, which I thought was great, and Sandra was who I was working with, she was very excited about it, so, you know, those are the kind of things that kids don't forget.
Right.
And they, they're important.
Trying to establish to voting is a healthy habit going forward in your life, because we, you know, also in Georgetown, and I'm sure we're not alone, have a rather low absentee ballot record, then, and we could have a lot more, you know, students in the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old range, so if we can really talk to them about it now, I think we can definitely improve on that.
And it was focused not on politics, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't completely bipartisan, nonpartisan. But it was about the process, and the value and the importance of what it means, and how to go out and talk to people about it in ways that allow it to, to be very balanced, so. I just want to mention that, because I really think they've, they've done a great job with it, and, you know, they might be out in the community, people might see them, and...
Oh, that's neat. Well, three of my kid, Dominic is now my third, that has had Ryan Corbett for a teacher, and he has always been very good about explaining the importance of being involved and having your voice heard and you need to vote, so I think that's great, that he's telling them, because they all respect and admire him, too, so coming from him and Sandra, it's really, it's great.
Some kids are gonna go to the senior center and talk to people who've been longtime voters, and, you know, the value of that, so there, there were a number of really interesting activities that were really out in the community, which was great.
Good, yeah, thank you for sharing that. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that wants to talk about anything on the agenda tonight?
One day Khan's gonna say yes.
Okay, so I think I'm up, next.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so I just quickly wanted to talk to you a little bit about the senior celebration, which we usually have a representative come to talk about it. Yeah.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you so much. So far, so good, we've had one meeting, we had fourteen parents come, and many more that are, you know, couldn't make that evening, but want to, you know, help in any way that they can. This particular senior class, they work so well together, the parents, so that's why I didn't feel so concerned about being the chair, you know, because I just know that, yeah. Yeah, because it's so great, and you know, you were part of it last year, it's just everyone wants to do whatever they can to make their, their child's senior trip a memorable one. So I was happy to get support from Principal Richards, I shot an email off to him, just explaining to him what we were going to be doing throughout the year, and we'll keep him, you know, engaged throughout the process. So we have, we're pretty much, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel, we're gonna continue to do the fundraisers that have been successful in the past, we're gonna start off with like a pie fundraiser from a local orchard in Methuen that we've worked with before, that will be in time for like Thanksgiving pies. We're gonna do the gift card fundraiser, which has always been very profitable.
And that's usually been associated with that senior celebration.
Right. So we'll be running that for the, for the winter holidays, and we're gonna do the hypnotist again, we're gonna go back to the hypnotist that we had a few years ago, if you remember, we had Steve Ronker, and then we changed over to somebody else, so we're gonna go back to him, and he was happy to, you know, be called upon, and he actually gave us the rate that he was giving a couple of ye, you know, three years ago, which he's gone up considerable amount of, amount of money, so he said, no, I'll honor the same amount, so that was really good. We are going to work with local restaurants in town, like Pomodori's, we're gonna reach out to The Spot, we're gonna reach out to Flatbread, they're always so good about having like the, the night where they donate a portion of the evening's proceeds to us. And the event, we'll talk more about what the event is, because we're not, we haven't really pinned it down yet, but it's gonna be June 6th and 7th, so it's right before the graduation, and it doesn't seem to interfere with anything in terms of the, the senior dinner, is that what they call it?
Senior dinner.
Senior dinner, so they normally have the award ceremony in the morning, and then they, they leave and go to Erie Fire Station around 1:00, and then they head off around 3:00 to enjoy the overnight event, so it's gonna be fun.
So do the same, same basic thing again this year?
Yeah, two years ago, they did, they did something totally different.
They went to Boston.
Yeah, that was my son's year, so we're gonna go back to what has been, you know, the, the tradition.
The whitewater rafting.
Yeah.
They seemed to really, really enjoy that most of all.
Yes, I talked to your husband about it, because he was a, he was a chaperone, and he said it was awesome, and the kids loved it, and they just had a lot of fun, and I talked to the whitewater raft company, and they were telling me how much fun they had, too, they're like, oh, you know, because I, I had wanted to maybe bring something in for the kids, like, you know, whether it's like a musician, or a comedian, or something, and they're like, you know, we, they really just want to hang out by the fire pit and have smores, and talk about, you know, whatever they want to talk about, so I'm like, all right, well, that's, that's good.
Event?
No, it's just they leave the sixth and come back the seventh, yeah, and then they graduate the next day. So depending on, you know, how much we are able to fundraise, and, and, you know, I'm sure other things will come up, that will determine how much the parents will need to kick in, and it's usually around a hundred to a hundred and forty dollars that they have to kick in after fundraising, so let's hope that we have a successful...
Jeff had a blast, he liked that.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be fun, we just have to hope for a beautiful day, but I've heard even rainy days have been fine.
So, um, so... I'll talk to you later, I have an idea, another fundraising idea.
Oh, okay, that's perfect, thank you. So we did just set up a Facebook page, that will be our form of communication with the parents, it's a closed group, so it's just for the parents of seniors, and that's how we'll get volunteers, and that's how we'll do all of our, most of our communicating, and I saw you sign, you went in today.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yeah, I'm not sure, when, when was the meeting?
It was last, last Tuesday or something.
It was the same night as the...
Yeah, because I, I talked to some people who...
Yeah, there was something...
Teen Center meeting.
The what meeting?
Teen Center meeting.
That's right, okay. The twentieth, then, it was a Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you went there, yeah.
Yeah, so you were there.
Right.
Yeah, can't spread ourselves, you know, I'm like, oh...
It's hard.
Yeah. So I hope that you'll all support me in this endeavor, and the committee. Do we, does it need to be...
No, because you're, you're doing it as a parent group, separate from us, really.
Okay, but the, but didn't we determine that the trip is, I know.
No, last year, we did not.
We did not.
Okay.
We just had people come and talk to...
We talked about it, but we didn't vote on, you know, somebody being a chairperson, or...
Right, because they are not le, right, they don't leave from the school like Disney does, everything is done at the Erie Fire Station. So, yeah, and all of our communication will be via Facebook, but I am asking Sharon to put things on morning announcements, too, in terms of the fundraisers.
Oh, and you're saying fundraisers?
Right.
Do we have to approve the fundraiser?
No, so, so...
Because they are...
It's just like advertising.
I think that's been done in the past, that, on the morning announcements, just for fundraisers.
Yeah, there's fundraisers for other organizations in town.
Just like any events, yeah, yeah.
And from what I understand, which I didn't really know this before, but the Kiwanis Club, they provide the food for the cookout before, so before they get on the bus, so after the senior awards, they go there, and they have a cookout, and they supply that, which I think is really nice, I haven't asked them yet to sponsor it again, but I'm sure they will.
Brownies and some desserts.
Right.
That I've done in the past, we've done in the past.
That's really nice, thank you.
Sure.
So I just, I think that's, that's great that they support that, so. So thank you all for your support, wish you well. Yeah. Well, Cheryl O'Larry has already offered, because she did it two years ago, and her and Rudy have great notes every, I actually have notes back to 2006 that this group has kept.
That has been helpful every year.
You know, and Rena Mullin, who did it last year, she's been awesome.
Rena Mullin did it last year, and she's got everything.
Yeah, she's, she's, yeah, I have the big hoop bin already, so.
Why reinvent the wheel, right, when somebody's done a good job with it?
Exactly. So thank you.
Oh, great.
So it says transportation update, I think I put it in the orange notes, I, I don't know, no news is good news, I guess, because we haven't, we just have one more thing, remember I told you the bus route, bus five, I, I still have to circle back on that, but everyone that was on the waiting list is on the bus, the buses are not overcrowded, full in a couple of cases, but not overcrowded.
So like how full, like?
Forty?
Well, no, I think there are a couple buses that are like sixties, but, you know, or at least one that's sixties, but...
Well, I think bus, bus...
Bus one is, I think, the big, the most full, I think so.
Or not?
They're not, so that's the weird thing.
So what was it, like, the first, like, week, maybe, everybody just wanted to do the bus?
No, when we register, we registered everybody online, and I think that maybe the process was too easy, and so people just registered, and then what happened is when, when the registrations came in, we started, when the routes were done, and we started putting kids on the bus, we put them in the order of the registration, so if you were somebody, if there were a bunch of people who registered but really weren't thinking they were gonna ride the bus, they, they got a bus seat, technically, before anybody who might have registered later that really was gonna ride the bus every day, so that was, that was the challenge. But people were patient, everybody's on now that wants to ride, we are, the bus company is keeping count, so we'll, we'll get some accurate data, and the convenience buster's about eight kids. We did have to move the convenient kids off of bus one, because of the fact that that was the fullest bus, but we moved them to bus four, and actually, they get picked up at quarter of eight, and they get dropped off at 3:30. So I don't think there's any big, you know, that's, I wouldn't see any complaints on that, they're the last stop. I mean, they are the first ones on and the last ones, well, no, not first ones on, but close, and then last ones off, but... But I think they look at it as it's a convenience, right, so they understand that, you know, we, we may, and nobody really had a serious issue with, you know, changing the bus passes, and Margaret's and her staff are getting ready to, like, they, they've organized it so that they literally have people checking who's getting on the bus every day, so that we'll be able to... Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to, A, know who's on the bus every day, in case there was ever any kind of an issue, but also it'll give us, you know, sort of a good sense of who's actually riding all the time.
The two issues that we're, we're dealing with, you had put it out in your blog, and I reiterated in my this week, that students have to have their bus pass displayed on their backpack when they get off, and we're checking before they get on, but I would say every day, there are about eight to ten children who don't have a bus pass, either they haven't picked it up, or it fell off, so it's, you know, at one of these times, though, because we've said you can't ride the bus without the pass, but there's a five-dollar replacement fee associated with it, so I am anticipating...
Is that something that we initiated?
Yeah, that, we, we said that that was what we were gonna do, we didn't do it last year, but this year, we're really trying to, because what we found was there were, there were a number of kids, when people started checking, that were not registered and had no bus pass, and were riding the bus. So, you know what, that, that's not the process, right, so now, we have the list of the kids who are registered and have been issued a bus pass, and what we're asking people to do is just take the bus pass and put it on your child's backpack, with one of those ties. You don't have, you're not asking the child to show the bus pass every day, but we're asking them, because they're colored, as you know, so, you know, if, if the bus driver's standing there at the, at the top of it, they can just see the kids going by, but it's already gonna have been checked with Margaret.
But now, again, we're, we're really trying to fine tune this, so we have the children coming down, instead of all the buses at once, would be a nightmare, we staggered it, so one bus waits in the cafeteria, and the other waits in the gym, and we have them in line by grade, and while they're waiting for the bus, we check the bus passes. So when the bus comes, they're, right on, get on, get out, then we call, then simultaneous, the other two, so that we, at the most, we have two buses waiting in the cafeteria, but then it's just more manageable, and we can, you know, again, take the attendance and check the bus pass.
So Margaret, will you continue to do the, the checking off?
Yes, and I, I like, I'm glad that we're doing that, because there is an element...
But the que, but the question I have for you on, like, say a child doesn't have the bus pass, but you know his name is on the list, that he is a buster?
We would let him on, if they, bec, well...
Yeah, if he's on the list.
The other day, a child came in with a shredded thing in a baggie, and said, "Your dog ate my bus pass."
Likely...
And it was legitimate.
No, it's, so, right, obviously, get on the bus, and we'll get another pass, and so we will get to know the children who are legitimate riders, but it's very disconcerting when we really don't know if someone's on a bus. There have been times, it's rare, but there have been times where a parent will call, "My child didn't get off the bus." Well, then when we track it down, were they supposed to be on? The driver might not remember, so we're relying on just faulty information, so to be able to know exactly who is on a bus, I think is...
Which has a lot of value.
And people will know, we've assigned a para or someone for that bus, so they will know the kid's on that bus, so after a few days, it won't take long for them to take the attendance.
Couple times we've had situations, maybe the bus was delayed, or, you know, there was a little breakdown or something, and we would be sending out connect ed messages to the whole school, because we, because we didn't know it was on the bus, so, you know, it's been something that I've really wanted to have happen for a long time, and, you know, this year, it gave us an opportunity, and Margaret, thanks to her and her staff, they, they're making it happen, I think we all feel a little bit better now, knowing if there was something that happened, we could literally go right down in AP Notifier, check the kids, and, and send the message right out.
And what's the policy now with the bus, and if kids are having like play dates?
They cannot ride a bus for...
They cannot, so if...
There's, there are rare times, if someone does send a note, and, you know, I, I have to, I'm having day surgery, and my neighbor's watching my child, I'm going to approve that, but for play dates, that, that really is not a reason.
And it's always been that way, I remember one...
We don't get, I don't think we get much pushback on that either.
No, no.
I know, I know, but they weren't supposed to.
Yeah.
Because I think we're, again, if you have a legitimate reason for asking for a child to ride the bus, of course, and if there's room, we're, we're going to do that.
Right.
Yeah, and we don't really get much pushback on that, I, it's never come to my attention that, you know, a situation hasn't been allowed, if it made sense to, we don't get a lot of asks.
So, the Old Jacobs Road route, is that one still?
It's, it's just the way we designed it, because, you know, right now, to upset that whole bus is, is a question, so we're, we wanna meet with a parent that has another idea, and so, you know, we are happy to do that, now that Cindy can breathe, because, you know, pretty much the issues have stopped, and we're gonna, we're gonna meet with that parent and talk it through, and, you know, if, if it doesn't happen this year, you know, and there, there is a legitimate way to do it, that doesn't, it isn't inefficient, right, it doesn't cause people to be on the bus. I mean, I do understand what, what they're saying, because if, the six minutes is a lot different than a hun, than a, than an hour, right? If you're riding an hour both ways, that's a lot of time on the bus, I understand that, I think we all get that, it's just a question of... Many people think that, that the reason it's like that is because the bus ends where the drivers park their cars, so many people think that it's just a convenience for the bus company, and I made Cindy explain to me exactly why she does it, so that, that I'm convinced that's, because that would not be a legitimate reason to impact kids in a negative way, because we want to end the, the, the route at a place that's convenient for the drivers. So that discussion is continuing, that's really the sort of the leftover niggling, but, but even, we were talking, even though we had that issue, it was not the craziness that it's been in the last three years, the issues have not been the same, and I haven't heard people saying their child, children on the bus too long, you know, that now that the convenience place, thing is in place, I mean, it does take care of those less than one mile and a half people that were concerned about the distance, and we're not getting any of that, so, you know, it really, we need to improve the registration process, I think, but other than that, let, let's hope next year's even better.
I know, no.
Because it wasn't on the Facebook page, there, you know, we, Margaret got some inquiries, Nancy and I got some inquiries, Barry got some, but really, all in all, it really wasn't very many people compared to, you know, how it was before.
How many were escalated to you, because you were the final?
Um, I probably, I probably dealt with four, which was, and, you know, reasonable, you know, reasonable questions, and a couple of them were really convenience people that, you know, had found out late that they might be able to get on that, so there really wasn't, some people were just concerned about, you know, I don't mind waiting a little bit, but, you know, my child is entitled to a bus.
Right.
And they are right, they are entitled to a bus, but we asked them if we could just have a few days to just manage the counts, because the, on paper, it looks like we have way more children on the buses than we have in actual reality. So Cindy was nervous about adding fifteen kids, right, and then finding out that, you know, we already had enough that was gonna put everybody over capacity, but that has not been the case.
Okay.
That was the beauty of waiting until you actually saw the ridership, because if you reacted to who was registered, you wouldn't let anybody on the bus, so that's good, we're good on that.
Okay, we also want to talk about the superintendent's goals.
Because we want to get that...
And I do agree with you in terms of limiting the...
Just I actually thought you had a lot of great ideas.
Well, I was just trying to throw some ideas out that I knew we were gonna be working on, but, you know, you may have some, some other ideas. But, you know, you may have some, some other ideas.
Well, I'm, I'm thrilled about the teen rep center, like, moving forward. And another one that I'm very happy about is the reinvigorating the boosters. So I'm, I'm pleased that those two are, are moving forward. Because we all know athletics needs a little, you know.
Helping hand.
So boost, yeah, boost, some funding. And I think.
It's the boosters.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know if there's any of those that you're less, you, you, you're, that are priorities for you. I mean, we're gonna be reporting to you anyway because we're creating this strategic plan.
I think that's, that's a great one.
So that's assuming you're gonna do blizzard bags. Am I understanding? I thought we were studying.
Yeah, we are, we're studying.
Okay, so I'd be careful to put that in as a.
Okay.
If you want me to make it happen, then I'll do it one way. If you want me to study it, I'll do it another.
I really wanna see the, the study though, go through to see if we could accomplish it by this year. I think, I think it would be.
Well, we don't have to start from scratch because what, from that inquiry that I, that I did on the list serve, you know, there's probably three or four districts that, you know, are doing it and they sent me their PowerPoints, their agreements with the union. So I think we can take a look at what, you know, what's been done and determine, you know, how could that look here? If we want, how, what, what they, they showed me what they're actually, how they're doing the lessons, who's involved. So, you know, I think it's a matter of just kinda going through the stuff and saying, you know, what do we think would happen here if we wanna do it?
So wait, if our intention is to start it this year, is that our intention?
Well, our intention.
Is to study it with the potential of starting.
Exactly.
To determine.
To determine if it's something that.
I mean, most places what they do is, because they don't wanna, they, they, they want the instruction between the teacher and the kids. So everybody puts five days in their calendar. So most people, you know, after three days, they'll make it a blizzard bag day, right? Whereas some people would prefer that we start day one. And I, I'm not a supporter of that. I don't think we should have five days with kids not having instruction from their, from their teachers. Just my opinion. You know, if it's two and it's at the end of the year and we add, you know, two days to, to make up at the end of the, three days to make up at the end of the year and then two days we can do the blizzard bags and it's a legitimate activity that the kids are engaged in, I, I personally would support that. But I, I, I have an objection personally to it being, you know, as soon as we get a snow day, we're, we're out for five days basically. There's a lot, many snow days as we have. But that, and that isn't usually the norm. I have not seen a place that starts day one with it.
Yeah, the, the missing instruction is definitely my concern too. Because I don't think any, any thing that we put forward to the kids could compare to.
Well, it won't.
The interaction there. So, right. But I, I do agree with that, that it can't be like every, every single snow day like all of a sudden. So it could be like after the third or something.
With the union. So I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that union representation will actually be on the study committee. I, I've mentioned it to Joe that I was, I'm gonna put it in the grapevine tomorrow. You know, I'm hoping that there'll be, you know, a couple more people. In a, you know, a variety of people, you know. So how does, how does it work for special education? How does, you know, how does it work for, you know, lower primary? How, how does it work for high school? You know, different people will gauge it different ways. We'll have parameters, but, you know.
Special education services too.
Right. Well, that's, that's, no, that's a, that's a big issue that places face because truly, you know, do you have to make up the services? Right? Are you, so that's something we, we do need to pay attention to.
And the staff that, that do not have, um, children.
A classroom, right.
Right, so they're getting the day off.
The B C B A.
Yeah, right, so they're getting the day off, like the, the, um.
And, and from what I've seen, just looking at the stuff cursory, I, I have not yet seen some, anybody actually assign an assignment to the teachers other than that they need to be somewhat available if any, you know, student emails them. But yeah, I mean, what happens for all the people who don't have a classroom responsibility? They kinda get a free day that we're paying them for. So, you know, I, I think there's, that's why I don't wanna say, you know, we're doing it. Because you, you know, there may be things that we all agree and say, you know what? That doesn't work, you know? And maybe they'll, it'll, you know, we'll do a pilot, you know, we can always do a pilot. But I think the goal is to get the committee started. So I, I'm gonna need to reach out and get a, a couple of parents, although you guys are both parents, so, you know, it's not like we wouldn't have parent involvement.
Have you gotten any on?
I haven't. So I don't know if it means that people just don't know about the opportunity enough or, or that's just not their top priority, you know.
At least on Facebook. People are very interested.
But, but they haven't volunteered.
Do they know, I mean, maybe we need to put it out on that to say.
I'm gonna do a blog tomorrow and I'm gonna say that we're setting up this committee and we're looking for some parent volunteers. I think I, I at one point did put something out, 'cause I think I was descriptive on how many parents I wanted, you know, that I wanted them from each level. But again, we're gonna go with what we get. That's the way, I think that's the goal. If we're gonna study it, we gotta get started and we'll go with who we get.
Yeah, well, I hope you're gonna limit it too because if you have too many people.
And if we need more, more input, we can always get input. But it doesn't need to be people sitting at the table.
I was gonna say, we're gonna have a cap on it 'cause if there are too many.
Let's get enough first before worrying about.
We haven't got the kids. Well, I think if we, if we get three additional parents between the two, besides the two of you, we're good.
And at the mass conference in Hyannis in November, there is a workshop on blizzard bags.
I guess I am.
You better check that out for us.
I do love how they, how they do that. They figure out what the hot topic is, you know, when they didn't start school later. They're, they're on top of it and then they have people that come in that, you know, have.
Tried it.
Done it.
Succeeded, tried and failed, studied it, sort of at every level.
So that's perfect.
Yeah. And Desi's supposedly coming out with some guidelines in terms of level of rigor and all of that. So yeah, it should work fine. So that's the status on blizzard bags. But in terms of these other areas, I mean, 'cause whatever ones you think are high priorities, I'll just put together some draft goals, obviously working with the administrators, because the district goals, you know, are largely coming from what we're doing as a whole district and their school implications to them. And then who is the group that is, is it still Suzanne and, it's still the two of you? Okay, 'cause I couldn't find it on the, on our, our little list of subcommittees, so.
It's right here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. I was looking at the, I was looking at.
Not that old.
Well, I'm happy to work with whomever. I just need to know who I'm working with. So it's, it's Suzanne and.
I think it's still us.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I, I don't know, like governance, I mean, I'm on governance, but it doesn't say that I am. I'm on public relations.
Yeah, I think that's probably the whole.
Right, that's my point.
So Nancy will have to update that. 'Cause I was asking Nancy the other day about budget and finance, 'cause I was forgetting it. Like, I knew, I knew it wasn't Barbie, but it was Nora Sherrill.
You don't want it to everything mean.
Awesome, Suzanne. Spread your wings.
Um, okay, so then what, what are we thinking for the, what are we, what are the most important things to you?
Well, how did we do last year, which I thought worked well? Like an email of one of you.
Well, you can do that if you want. You can do that. I just put it on there in case there was something.
So why don't we do that? You, you, I'll send you out a reminder email, but you can send it out to me what your priorities are. And then I'll send forward it, I'll loan it to you.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
Yes, yeah.
Works for me.
Although I, I do think you named all the really important topics that I could think of. You know, you talked about working on social emotional learning.
Well, that's probably.
Technology integration, writing across the curriculum, accelerating the performance of students in the high needs category. Working with the community to open a teen rec center at Pearlie, new health and wellness curriculum, though we have it, but making it work and integrating it. And middle and elementary math. So I mean, it's, you know, as we've said, we don't want too many, 'cause if we have too many, then you don't.
And we want something that, that.
Well, still, we have to narrow it down, but then we also have to, there are things.
Then we have to narrow it down even further because then you want a goal that we could actually accomplish, right? That we can track.
But these are all things that are going to happen.
They are. They're all things that we're talking about, including in the strategic plan.
But they're going to happen. They are.
Happening.
Happening.
Happening, it's.
And that's why they might make great goals.
But I think we wanna try to, remember, I think last year we were kinda, by the time we had them done, it was like half a year. So I think, I just wanted to get it started. So we'll get a, a meeting after you hear from the group.
And then, uh, school committee topics too. We wanna talk about that. So in the packet is the breakdown of what we did last year.
It's probably not super helpful 'cause there's a lot of things that aren't pertinent, pertinent anymore, but.
Well, it gives us an idea too.
That's what I thought it would give you. But some of these things we just read might be things you want updates on too.
I definitely would love to have the, the special ed group come in. You know, Jack's group from both Penbrook and the middle high school come in and present. I've done that in the past and it was very informative.
Yes. And if there's a, if there's a focus that we want, remember last year we sort of focused it? First year we did programs, like all Jack did, the whole programs. And then last year, I think we focused on, what did we focus on last year? With special ed, it was more focused. It was specific to.
Was it the PBIS? Was it?
I can't remember. I, Jack will know.
Sort of their, not talking about individual students obviously, but like, it was almost like a day in the life of.
Right, like what they do.
Yeah.
I know what it's like.
Which I thought was really good.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, you know, we can just, we can just think about that, technology in special education. Certainly could.
Or even, you know, continued updates on the one to one and how, and new ideas that are being used in the classroom.
Exactly.
Maybe, maybe like twice a year, you know, maybe two times. One, um, late fall, one spring, you know. 'Cause it's continually ongoing.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. You like that too, the one to one, that's good.
Sort of like tech integration kinda things.
Yeah. I mean, I love hearing from various different student groups who might, you know, enjoy presenting whatever they're, they're working on.
Well, the FBLA, that's new.
Yeah, yep.
I'd love to see that. It's gonna be different from DECA, so, but yeah, I love, I love when the students come in and tell us things.
We had a couple of, some new courses at the high school. Like, one of them is the Adobe, making Adobe apps. I don't remember what the other one is, but just to hear from those students to see, I mean, we know nothing about them because they're brand new courses. Might be interesting, might get people interested in signing up for them next year.
That's in the business.
That must be in the business department.
It's in art, actually, fine arts.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
So is that Martha Dodge?
Yes.
That does that?
Yes. I would say continued updates on RTI.
So that would be the social, emotional and RTI, 'cause we're using RTI.
Well, and I guess where the second step is new this year, just really, I mean, I know everybody has to get into it and trained and whatnot, but just to get updates on that.
Yeah, that's part of our social, emotional, uh, action plan.
I can't remember what Colin had introduced to us. I can't remember if it was the social, emotional or the wellness. There was a program that you were, what was the name of that?
Second Step.
Yeah, that's what Cheryl just mentioned.
What's it called?
Second Step.
Second Step. So that's been implemented or?
Well, that's being implemented this year.
Yeah, I think teachers in Penbrook have done at least the first, the first lesson so far.
So I'd love to hear about that and how that's doing.
Well, they, they sent home a parent thing, so you could sign on. And then it was like a training.
Yeah.
Oh, for the parents?
Right, and I didn't finish it. I, I just started and then I digressed, but, um, so there was something that came home.
Okay, you guys sneak. Wouldn't know that 'cause you're, so I wonder if all the teachers sent that home.
Well, how, and how, can I ask how, was it sent, was it sent on the Second Step letterhead or was it sent?
It was on the le- letterhead. Yeah, it was like, um, photo copies from Second Step.
Because every, every, um, grade level does have parent information that does match the unit they're working on.
Yes, they're working, right.
So again, I, I will follow up why you might not have gotten that.
Is that something we could get a little packet of so we can see it?
I mean, Margaret can.
Well, it's, it's, I, a packet of.
On, on Second Step stuff?
Well, yeah, of just like, yeah, just so we can see what's going on.
There's actually a lot of information because every teacher, not only do they have their, the book of all the materials, but it is a login. So once you get onto that website, now you've got like a ton of other resources. So that's why I'm like, I don't know.
That would be a lot, but Cheryl could bring in some samples.
But, yeah, I'd love to see what's going out.
What I can also, what I can also do is, so the, the online resources, um, they're by, they're by activation codes. So I have a Google Doc that has all the activation codes by grade level. There's no limit to how many times you can use a certain code. So I'll share that document with the committee.
Oh, great.
Yeah, you did that on another curriculum that I learned.
You'll have to, you'll have to make your own account. You'll make an account at secondstep.org and then it'll prompt you to, to add an activation code. You can then check the document, add as many as you want for whatever grade levels and check out all the stuff.
So you can send that to us?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And how are the teachers reacting towards it? Are they?
Well, it is, it is interesting because there are mixed reactions. Um, some teachers felt some of the material's a little outdated. And then some teachers said, yeah, the kids loved it. And then actually the older learners, we had a meeting today with sixth grade, and they said that at first they were, the, the children were a little, you know, cool toward it. But then it started, as soon as they started doing the role playing and acting out some of what they wanted, then they really got into it. So I think it just, sorry?
It's active, right?
So I think as, as the kids get into it and actually start doing some of the hands-on and the role playing and, you know, there's songs, there's videos, the younger kids, there's puppets, that I, I think it will be engaging.
And is this replacing the responsive classroom? Is that what, this is sort of?
Well, it, in many ways it, it is, to be honest, in many ways it is. Um, teachers still do a morning meeting in the primary grades because it is building that relationship. And as we said, that's what responsive classroom really did. It helped build community. But as children got older, the morning meeting lost its, its meaning. It, it really didn't do what it, it was meant to do. And, and responsive classroom, the morning meeting as kids get older, was really never meant for, you know, my name is and the kids to get to know one another. But because teachers never really were trained in how to take it to the deeper level as kids get older, they, they really didn't have that resource. So, um, we feel like this is, it's targeted, it is sort of a search-based, social, emotional program. Um, it's again aligned right through the grades. It's for a specific, um, you know, amount of time. But then there are activ-, they do it once a week, but then there are activities to carry through every day, throughout the day. There is, I got my, the principal's toolkit, um, which, so again, it just is, I'll send out a blurb in my this week to kind of, you know, frame the whole school on what we're working on. So it just, it's more of an aligned, social, emotional curriculum. And I think as we do get to know it and teachers get to know it really well, I, I think it will be good.
But we'll have a, we'll, we'll do a little session on that, maybe a- after they've used it for a while.
Right, so have some more data to see. I was just curious how it was being integrated, how it's being used. If, you know, responsive classroom was being phased out, if that was a replacement. I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, it's not, we're not considering responsive classroom our social curriculum across the board. Is that fair to say?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't mean that we don't think there are great elements of responsive classroom and some teachers really implement them really well. But, you know, if you were really doing responsive classroom, you know, you'd be doing all, everything would be related to responsive classroom in the same rules and logical consequences and all that. Not to say that, you know, that isn't happening in some classrooms, but by, by, by the PBIS framework, the, the social curriculum is sort of the tools to sort of make sure that that framework is being addressed, right? And responsive classroom and any other social curriculum that anybody's familiar with just enhances it.
And is any of this trickling up towards like even say middle school?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
Um, but that's a discussion that we started. Um, Dan has his own plans for social, emotional things. He's doing, you know, there. But as far as the curriculum going all the way up at this point, I would say that's, I can tell you that's not happening. But it's worth a, it's worth a look because there is a curriculum that goes, you know, through the middle school.
Well, and I guess the other thing was science, where we're in year two of the.
That was the other, um, the one that Colin gave us.
Yes, the other really, cool. Yeah, so Colin will do his curriculum updates, you know, throughout the year and, you know, we can definitely check in with those things.
And so what about the vertical teams? When are we thinking of having them?
Well, that's, that's what I mean.
So we'll start in earnest, uh, my meetings with them in October and then probably, you know, give us a few, a few meetings to have under our belt and we'll be happy to come in and present. So, we'll start in earnest, uh, my meetings with them in October and then probably, you know, give us a few, a few meetings to have under our belt and we'll be happy to come in and present.
Yeah, I think we usually do those, like, I think you and I have always had those sort of January, well, Janu-, I think last year we did them in the spring, right? Oh, you're not seeing them? Because I know Colin did two of them last year.
Oh, yeah, no, we did, but it's just not on the.
I think February, March, April.
I think that's what it was. It was February, March, April, maybe January, because that gave you a, basically a summary of what they've been working on.
Okay. April twelve? Oh, on this side, I didn't even look. Yeah, April twelve.
Oh, there it is, vertical.
And then food services, I definitely want to talk to Sean, see how things are going, you know, obviously not, you know, gonna give him a couple of, yeah, months too to see how.
Yeah, a couple of months. We're still looking for cook manager if anybody's listening, and we'd be interested in talking to us about it.
Oh, it's still open?
Yeah.
Are we getting applicants?
No.
Well, we got a few.
Oh, did we get some from the ad in the paper?
Well, no, not anymore.
No, we, we actually put it again in the local papers, thinking that, you know, people don't look at school spring for a job like that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, we just really, no, I'm gonna put on my blog, I'll write a blog about it. He's got a part-time worker.
Nothing. He has a part-time worker too. That he wants to fill, that he has.
Okay.
But they, what they've been doing at the high school is they're starting to get a little frazzled now, because they're, you know, you can get away with it for, you know, a couple of weeks, but then when you're having to do it, you know, for now a month and moving into the second month, um, they've been, uh, hiring a sub.
Subs.
That, you know, can kind of fill in, so at least, you know, they can man all the stations, but we really would love to get.
I know, because if that, if not having that position is then having it longer wait time, then the participat-, participation goes down.
Right. Right.
Yeah, and then it's like a domino effect.
So, if you know somebody who would be really great at it, you know, send them our way.
Mm-hmm.
That's a bummer.
Okay, anybody else have?
Okay. I mean, as things come up, we can add them, but this'll give us a, a sense of, we will try to block them in and give you a draft.
And Caitlin Donovan too, when she comes back from that Plymouth State, I want, I want to hear how that goes, because she's taken the whole.
Oh, yeah.
The whole group.
The whole group this year, whereas last year she only took a little, you know, a few.
Yeah.
It was like six or something. I'd love to hear how that goes.
And when the kids come back from Disney, you might want to hear them.
And from Disney as well, then.
Yeah. Okay, we're, we're not gonna have enough meetings, but, but we'll.
I've been hearing a lot of talk about the field trips though. I've been hearing a lot of talk amongst the parents about the field trips, like Puerto Rico and, um.
Oh, you have? Dan, how many did she say she got initially?
Chicago.
Uh, they have a meeting this evening, so she doesn't have a fine number yet.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, but was there, she got a lot of interest, okay.
Yeah, so that was good.
It's also unfortunate that some of the football players can't go to Chicago with the FBLA, because there's a game.
Oh, how come?
Oh.
Well, the same with the soc-, with the soccer too, soccer playoffs.
Yeah, so there's, there's a bunch of players that can go.
If we get into soccer playoffs, we can't, I mean, we can't change the national conference.
No, no, but I mean, you know, they're, they're upset that they're missing.
That is a shame.
It's a brand new thing.
I know, I can understand that.
Especially where it's a brand new program.
Apparently they can make the decision.
Does Chicago supposed to happen?
Up to early October, like October, you know, that first week in October, which is next week.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but the kids in the soccer team kind of had to make a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
It's a big decision, yeah.
But that is a hard decision.
A hard decision, that's, that's right.
Very hard decision. Such a big conference like that, it's so hard to work around. It's like, you know, I'm leaving it alone. It's like, whatever, we can't work around it, right? Yeah. It's the right thing, that's the right thing then. Well, I'd like to hear how the field trip meeting goes tonight, because that's a lot of, a lot of things between Quebec, Disney, Chicago, and then Puerto Rico. It's a lot going on.
Mm-hmm. It is.
Puerto Rico.
Yeah.
I didn't know there was a field trip meeting.
We might want to spread those things out, like in the future.
Puerto Rico.
Oh, for Puerto Rico.
Just to, just to make it easier for families to.
To manage their money.
Manage their money.
Yeah.
If you want it, you can go to two, that's a pretty.
And, and you have.
And you have somebody at the middle high school and a sixth grader.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, we have, uh, exciting news. I know Michael was excited about it. The, the Model UN, that's gonna be introduced, um, to Georgetown, yes, which is, which is great, and this is,
Yeah. Yes.
So, Sandra's doing this.
Yes.
She's busy.
She is busy.
She is busy and, and she loves, and she loves that topic though.
She loves this, she loves that topic though.
To do this with, along with the integration specialist position, she's finding it.
Well, we'll find out, right?
She, she offered to do it, yeah, has started, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, right, so, um.
I'm all for it.
I know you are, I know you are. And, and after, I took some time, uh, yesterday to, you know, just kind of delve into it like big time and see what it's all about and, um, with everything that's going on now with the real United Nations, it's just very interesting to introduce this now, but I think it's great too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Again, it's one of those authentic learning environments, you know, that you want kids to have experiences with.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
You go force Steven into it.
You're gonna force Steven.
For Steven gets forced into it.
Have fun.
We'll do this, Steven.
And so they also have the big, um.
So, there are, there are sort of national conferences, kind of national, state and local, so a lot of these schools actually run
Yeah.
local conferences for schools in the area, then, they're, they tend to be university-based beyond that level, so you can do, there are a bunch in Boston.
Yes.
You can travel pretty much anywhere in the country and the world, frankly, to them as well.
Wow.
And I wonder how, what show do?
Yeah, that's the only thing I, I don't, we, I don't think we've got that far, have we, Dan, in terms of talking?
We need to, uh, introduce it with baby steps and grow from there and learn from all the schools and.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But I don't know kind of what budget you, you need for something like this. Like, I don't, I don't really know how it works budgetary, I mean.
It's, it's essentially a student-funded.
Student-funded?
Endeavor. And it, and it all comes down to how far you want to go.
Right.
There, there are ways to get on a bus, or there are ways to have parents drive to, you know, New Han-, you know, New Hampshire or the end over, whatever, where there's a, where's a, so there's, there's either a sort of a Saturday day-long model, or there's a Thursday to Sunday model, which is the bigger program.
That, that they participate in, okay.
Correct. So, a Saturday one, it's often literally, it's just parents dropping off at, you know, everyone show up at Georgetown High School at eight AM and, you know, bring together a hundred kids and, and do it,
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is good for kind of learning what it is, practicing kind of skills development. And then there are the university-based conferences, which are a more.
And what did you do, when you were involved with it? Did you do both levels?
I did both. So, we, we actually ran three conferences, and then we did a whole host of, like, at the high school, one-day models.
And when you say we ran it, who ran it?
The order, so I used to work with an organization, and I still work with them a little bit. Um, it's a nonprofit that runs conferences.
Okay, so that's kind of what I was wondering is, you know, sort of how, like Sandra has responsibility for preparing kids, like Lisa did for, for DECA, but we aren't running the conferences, but we have to, we're gonna send students to the conferences.
No, you'd be attending. Correct. And then there's ultimately an option, if it grows and you can use it as, as a fundraising opportunity to actually host a Saturday morning or a Saturday day-long event at the high school, for example, and bring kids from surrounding communities.
Mm-hmm. But it's run by this organization?
Uh, you can run it internally or sort of outsource it.
And then how do you pay for that? Like, do the, do the kids, like, so if they go to a conference, it's a cost for each child to attend?
Correct. So, the, like, the one-day ones would typically be a twenty-five dollar, sort of a nominal, make sure you're committed to it, you know, try it out, commit to it, it includes lunch and, and stuff.
Okay. Okay.
Um, the four-day ones, it varies greatly, um, because there's hotels, there's buses or, um, it would be three or four hundred dollars for the weekend.
Yeah, right, exactly. Oh, well, that's not so bad.
Well, we think Baby Steps is a good idea to do it and see how successful it is and see how.
And more if you're flying.
I do, I agree one hundred percent.
Yeah. And there are a bunch of programs in the area.
People, yeah.
Oh, that's the other thing I was gonna ask. I don't know what's in the.
I think Newburyport does Model UN.
Well, maybe we can engage Michael in discussion with Sandra and you about this, just so, because he's obviously worked in that arena.
Dan, did your previous school have Model UN?
At one point, we had a club and then it disappeared, but there was so much interest that kids did it independently and kept it going and actually went to the national competition.
Oh, wow.
Did very well.
Okay.
I'm excited about it. I don't know much about it, so that's gonna be new to me.
Yeah, I, I think it's great that.
But I just love the hands-on aspect of it, that's, and obviously civics, everybody's talking about civics and the need for civics to come back, so, you know, that will be coming in the new social studies frameworks for sure.
Good.
Um, but, you know, we'll be ahead of the game, you know, in terms of.
Do we, do we know a date when the, the new social studies frameworks will be out now?
Um, Colin, I, they're, they're out for public comment, yeah?
Oh, they're out, they're, they're released.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I actually have them in my office now that I think of it.
Yeah.
But what is the expectation, like, for the use of them?
Uh, so, as with all the new frameworks, there's kind of the couple-year grace period to make transition, and there are groups of educators and curriculum directors and department heads that are kind of forming in our areas now, or kind of look through them and start some collaborative unit planning and resource gathering, so there are some things out there that.
Yeah, there are. At some point.
Sure. There are some things out there that we can, we can join. I've sent the department heads and, and, uh, department members that info if they want to join those, those groups, but we'll have to start looking at our written curriculum to see how it jives. For the most part, the, the standards are,
Hmm.
they're a little tighter, they're, they're a little more concrete in what content needs to be taught to students, but I think for the most part, we're, we're in a good spot as it is.
And do we have a social studies vertical, or history, social studies vertical team? So, that might be something we have.
Haven't, we, we have it in the past, um, but something to.
Yeah. Yeah, when we did the strategic plan in Colin's area, we had talked about, you know, if we have to add things like that, we'd add them in more, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, uh, let's make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the new, um, club Model United Nations and begin negotiations with the uh, GEA for the advisor stipend. Okay, so, this, this isn't, this is what we're thinking, maybe?
That's usually what the first year.
No, so when, when we have a first-year club, so, I forgot now, who's on the negotiating team? You and Michael, I think, yeah. So, what we have, yeah, I think it's, hmm, I thought it was the two of us.
No. No, I think it's me.
Yeah, it's Barbie. So, um, what we need to do is we need to, they'll all, the new clubs, the Irish Club, the, I wrote them down for myself to remember. The Irish Club, um, the, uh, Mary Hayes is gonna do an Irish club.
Oh, okay, it's the first we're hearing of, like, what?
Who better, who better to do it than Mary Hayes, right?
What is the Irish Club?
And the comedy class.
Mike, Mike's.
They're doing the step dancing?
Dancing, dancing.
Oh, they, I don't know what she's dancing.
Oh, Irish step dancing.
No, I don't know what it is.
Oh, Irish step.
I'm Irish, I can say that.
I'm Irish.
Here's what we need, side letters.
Serious.
We need, we need a side letter for the.
Mike Murphy's all with me.
We have a side letter for the Irish Club, then we have a side letter for stand-up comedy club and Model UN.
Oh, so I was gonna ask that, yeah.
He could actually, he fits in all three if you do it right.
Wow, he's, so you got enough people to do the stand-up?
I haven't seen the numbers. I've spoken with Dan, so we're just, uh, get it off the ground pretty soon.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so we, we will have to meet to, with the union to negotiate those three.
All right, so. Okay.
But for this year, we're good, because everybody gets the six hundred dollars the first year.
Okay, so Cheryl's so moved, Mike.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about the United Nations, Model United Nations?
Sounds awesome.
Okay, good. Colin, favor?
Hi.
Me too, I'm excited for it. But you talked a lot about them in the, in the beginning when you came on the committee.
Yeah.
Yes, he reminded us three years ago, but I said to him, it takes three years to make a major change sometimes, so patience. We didn't forget, we heard you.
It was a wrap.
Positive. No, I think it's great. Oh, there's something I wanted to ask. So, and now I'm forgetting. I watched over it, and, um, it was on the list of what we were just discussing, which was.
Negotiations?
No, what was Colin?
Clubs?
No.
Irish clubs?
We're gonna play the fifty questions, was it, was it?
Irish step dance?
The Irish, the, um. Comedy club.
Yep.
I forget.
Negotiations this year we're doing with Jisa.
You're not even fifty.
Jisa?
Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll have to start thinking, you know, like October-ish.
Okay.
To get, talking to Jisa. So, that'll start up.
I can't believe they're up again.
I know. Time flies.
Even, and I wasn't even on the negotiations, but I feel like I was just with them.
Right, yeah.
You know, it seems like they come up.
That's a couple years ago.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so October, you're saying, mid-October.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what I was gonna say. Um, has any of the subcommittees gotten together what budget and finance did today?
They did.
Yeah.
We talked very, very early part of the year, budget calendar, um, something that Suzanne is gonna bring to the committee in the near future is, um, setting up a four oh three B administrator, which we need to do, I guess by law, um, which we.
Right now, we just don't have somebody to administer it.
Correct.
So, what is that?
It's a third-party administrator.
We've been managing in-house. It should be a third-party.
It's like four oh three Bs, and people make contributions.
Yeah, yeah.
They deal directly with their provider, as opposed to a third-party administrator who's supposed to help.
Standing in the middle.
Oversight, yeah.
The IRS requires. She's answering all the research.
So, you're, you're taking care of that?
Yes, and she'll come to the school because it requires your approval.
Thank you. Okay.
And then we spoke briefly about, uh, some special education budgetary issues, but it's still September, so.
Yeah.
You've got a long way to go.
No, there's one concerning. Yeah, right now.
So, there's stuff on the radar.
There's stuff on the radar, yeah.
How did you like the first meeting?
Uh, it was very interesting.
Isn't it a lot of stuff?
Yeah, but I understood more than I thought I would.
Good.
That's good.
No, it's, it's, um.
That committee, it's a lot, especially when it comes to the, the budget season, but I think everybody.
Budgets. Budget.
That committee, it's a lot, especially when it comes to the, the, the budget season, but I think everybody.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
Because it, you just kind of talk about everything, and you have to know. And then you get a more, a better perspective for the work that you, you two do.
Yeah, well Suzanne, Suzanne's still waiting her turn.
I have ten fingers, that's as far as I am going. I know, I'm very intimidated by numbers too, but.
Donna, you used to say that, you don't want me out, but she was awesome, Barbie was great, I mean, you, if you're involved and you're with someone that.
It helps when you learn. Cause Anne Blythe, and she.
Chews and numbers.
Calculated her brain, you are very much, you know, so I think it's important to be with, when you're intimidated by numbers.
She, she knows.
CFO.
Sounds like you're never getting off that.
No, I've been told that.
Yeah. No matter how many times Suzanne's asked me to get you off, no, I'm not.
No, never, I'm kidding.
Never, never. Wouldn't be the same without it.
We have really good discussions.
No, really.
And I will say that Wade Snow from FinCom was there, so it's good that we have a liaison.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, right from the start, yes.
Starting September.
Wow, so he's committed to it.
A good, good conversation.
I think, yeah, he, he understood a lot because he's been a department head, so he's got a slightly different.
Said him and then they're gonna be joining.
Right, and how is the FinCom going?
They just met, they just met once.
Do they have? Okay, but they have enough, okay, they're full, so that's good.
But they're full.
Yeah, he said they, yeah, so they shouldn't have as much trouble getting a forum, which was a big problem, they were saying before.
Yeah.
It was good, good time.
Okay, well, that's good, um, has anyone else met? Safety is meeting, uh, in October, and then, like you had said, negotiations needs to start.
No, so we. Uh, coming up. Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, governance, am I still on governance?
I think you are.
You and Pam, right?
Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, so.
Yeah, do we have anything major coming up about this?
Well, we were talking today about, uh, the four oh three B, uh, policy, we have to look at.
But there must be something.
In the fundraising policy.
The fundraising policy.
What are you gonna do, what, what about that?
It's the GoFundMe stuff.
Oh.
Sort of like the crowdfunding.
Yes.
fundraiser.
Yeah, can we rea- like, get down to the nuts and bolts of that, because it seems to be like exploding.
Mm-hmm, yes. It is, because it's a quick, easy way to, you know.
I know, but the fact that it's, uh, and I know I had talked to you last year about it when I, when the sports team did it, and I'm not, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
All the power to you to get the money, and I appreciate the, all the time that the parents and children.
Put into fundraising, yeah.
I, I, but the fact that it's, you know, um, usually established or initiated by like the coach or something, and I don't know if. The money should be going through.
No, it shouldn't.
No, we, we, we're gonna, we're clear on that, and we had a situation, Dan, Dan took care of it, um, and he put something out to all the staff, I'm putting in the grapevine. You know, just reminding, just reminding people, cause it's all in good.
Yeah.
Faith, right, you know, so peop- and this, everybody's got a GoFundMe page for this, that, or the other thing. But, you know, if it's, if it's an individual student, like there was one on Facebook where there was sort of an individual student who was reaching out on behalf of the club. That's where it gets dicey, if she were reaching out on her own, right, giving her.
And wanting to take this opportunity.
I, I wanna, yeah, I, I, or I'm, I'm raising money for this, for myself, you know, that I'm gonna do this thing, that's a little different.
Yeah.
But when you're doing it for a group or organization for the schools, cause it kind of involves tax ID number, which no one should have or be given unless they come. To the business office for that, or a person's personal social security number.
And really the taxpayer as well.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's just dicey, so, you know, we, we don't want it, it's not a practice that we're gonna continue. Um, although individuals can do it on their own behalf, but it can't represent the school.
Hmm, right, and it sounded like that page was misrepresented.
I don't know if it was misrepresented, but I, I know that it was all in good intention.
Yeah.
Um, we talked to Lisa about that today, uh, conversation Dan and Suzanne and I had, um. Regarding, uh, you know, the F, F.
FBLA.
FBLA, I can't, can't, FBLA, um.
DeCA was so much easier to say.
Tri- tri- you know, trip, we had some things we had to kind of work out with that, but, um, we did talk about, about this with Lisa, and she, she didn't know about it.
Blah, blah. Yeah.
So that's the other thing that's clearly gotta be stated, is any fundraising, no matter who you are, ha- has to be approved by the prin- or.
It's a private, it needs to be.
Well, especially if they're, it's on behalf of the district.
Right.
That's the issue.
And, you know, the AD, you know, we talked to Ryan as well, because, you know, coaches shouldn't just kind of be going out on their own, saying this is what I'm gonna fundraise for.
Cause there's always a contract that goes along with these, and no one should be signing a contract on behalf of the district, really, except for.
Right.
You know, so, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it's just cleaning up, but I think it's, well, like you said, it's exploding, but part of it is because. It's the age of social media, that's just moving faster than, it, it's so easy, that, you know, you don't have to do a bake sale and a million, you know, fundraisers.
It's just so easy. So easy.
But sometimes I just wonder, what are we preparing our kids for?
I know, I know.
Like, everything is that, you know, you wanna know how to bake chocolate chip cookies, you ask your parent, it tells you. When we were kids, like when we did homework, we had to go to the encyclopedia and figure out which book, take it out.
Yes, no, I know.
Dating itself.
I know, I am, but that's okay.
Wasn't that long ago though.
Right, but that's, but we're still, you know, like.
Yeah, oh, don't.
Right?
You're right.
We used to do bake sales, and you, my mother would say, you're gonna bake the brownies if it's your bake sale, you know, but now, you just go, GoFundMe type a little thing up and.
Right, exactly, yeah. Fifty dollars appears.
You know, I mean, it's whoever introduced GoFundMe is very.
Yeah, it's kind of crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
There's fees, and there's.
Yeah, there are fees, yeah, no.
Yeah, like, they do take.
Yeah.
They ta- yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's gotten better, but.
But they've taken on a life of their own, because it's amazing, some of the.
Yeah.
They have.
Now it's for anything.
Things, the people.
But they're also, they're a bunch of GoFundMe.
Oh, yes, of course, and that's why you have to be careful, so we don't want that to be what's representing our schools.
Of course. Your money to charity, you have to be.
Um, so, you know, we're, we're gonna rein that in and.
So that's the first thing that governance will be talking about, then fundraising and the four oh three B.
Oh, yeah, I think we could talk about that idea. Yeah, that, I think that's what's on the table right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Okay, does anybody have anything else that they wanna talk about? Let's, is on the agenda, no?
This is great.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, there's no reason to have a executive session this evening, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the open meeting at seven forty-five PM.
Seven.
Second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, good night.